I know.
Are you gonna look early?
I'm gonna wait.
Yeah, it's fun seeing all the boys.
It's as needed, yeah. We've pretty much moved it around about one. You know, like I say, it was three this already this year. There aren't any more.
Happy New Year.
Block that one real fast. That one's off.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for seven o'clock.
She does.
Oh, yeah. So we all wait.
Come on.
For the finance.
Yep.
Okay.
Call meeting to order, seven o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, such a large group of my people.
I know.
Thank you very much. This is the regular Board of Finance meeting and also the tri-board meeting. So we need to have the Board of Selectmen call their meeting to order and the Board of Education call their meeting to order. So we can go on that board.
So the Board of Selectmen would like to call their meeting to order. Have a motion, so moved, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just a reminder that I'm asked to, whenever anybody makes a motion, if they could just say, state their name, it makes it easier to get the.
Irene Haynes.
Our secretary is remote, so speak up and be heard.
Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. Can I have a motion?
My name's Jim Franchese. I move we call the meeting to order.
Second.
My name is Terry Garrity, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for a roll call, we have myself, Kathy Stricker, Jim Franchese, Terry Garrity. I'm sorry. Carrie Thompson and Laura White.
Okay. And just for the record, we have all three selecting here, so Eric Dill and Teresa Goldberg. And a full house on the Board of Finance side as well. Okay, so approval of agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Harvey, second.
Yelson, seconds.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so I will hand it over. We have some slides for everybody to take a peek at.
That's cool technology.
Look at that, here we are. So on the Board of Finance side, we really are just almost tertiary in this, in this process because definitely it does go to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education first, and then it comes to the Board of Finance. So these two groups are in the middle of doing their budget planning and budget, putting it together, however, whatever the word is for that. Can you hit the slide? Thank you.
Oops, wrong button. Too many buttons.
Too many buttons.
There we go.
Okay, so we've got everybody, including Superintendent Ryan Reese and our Finance Director Rob Funk is here to help us through this process. And for the Board of Finance, key points are, we're just looking to maintain a framework to operate under and have an open process throughout this entire budget building season, which technically started probably in November. And will end with a referendum in May. Most of the information will be out there as it comes in, and you can click on the town website and click through on the Board of Finance side into budgets and everything will be there. Prior to it getting to the Board of Finance, I'm not sure how it's gonna look. It's go, go through ClearGov on the town side and then the Board of Ed is gonna start their meetings very soon. Other than that, just, we're open, we're, if you have a question, send us emails. Finance Department, send them through to Rob and he'll get them to me and to us. Other than that, who's first? Board of Selectmen's first, so Irene?
I am. One more, Bob. There we go. Okay, so our budget process for the Board of Selectmen is, our considerations are that our citizens, as of last year and this year, I'm sure, have indicated that they just want greater detail line by line, which we're happy to provide. The budget detail will, you know, continue to implement the line item wherever possible. We're, we'll be using the same as we did last year for the zero-based budgeting to prepare. And right now, global supply chain issues, increasing supply costs, increasing utility costs, those are gonna be obviously big considerations on our budget. The zero-based but, budgeting is where, it's a method of budgeting which all expenses must be justified from ground zero, from a zero base, and each function is gonna be analyzed over the needs and the costs. The zero-based budgeting again starts from zero and calls for justification of old and recurring expenses as well as in addition to new expenditures. So we start at zero and they have to justify why they spent what they spent, and then are they gonna plan on spending it next year as well? So that's, we start at zero, we don't say we need 10% more than we had last year. That's not how we do it. The budget detail, you'll see everything in there. Our salaries and wages will be listed by each position with the associated cost. On the line item detail, there will be graded until where appropriate, where you can see actual, all the items within each budget and budget line. And the budget calendar will be continually updated on the website to keep citizens informed, such is what Tracy had said. Budgets are due to the Finance Office for all of our departments by January 17th, and the initial budget review is then conducted by the first selectman in January. So I'll be meeting with all the department heads to talk about each different budget and why they asked for what they asked for and what they did last year versus this year, so that we kind of clarify what they've put in place. And then we will actually go through as a board to conduct their budget review in February. So each department will come to us and we'll go through it as a board, we'll ask questions, they're tough, be careful. But we're looking forward to that budget process and we're open to, and we welcome employee, board, commission members, public input suggestions and comments, and they can all, and questions that, you know, as you can see at the bottom of our thing, it goes to the BOF@eastadam.org. So please send in the questions now. We would much rather have questions and answer them and work through. We might get a great suggestion by somebody, we'd love to hear about it. So please send it our way and we'll be happy to address. Last year, we did this slide and I moved things around this year because I think I moved them from left to right by what we feel is more in line with our priorities. Last year, staffing was number one because we had all kinds of openings. This year, we were in pretty good shape. As a matter of fact, there was a moment, I think it was about a week, where we had complete staffing overall, we had positions for everyone. And then our library director le, left us, so, and then we have an anticipated vacancy soon. But anyway, so we're starting with public safety. You know, I, we believe that, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the town government is really important in regards to its public safety, and that's really where we, we start what we do for the town. Currently, we're running an RFP for a full-time ambulance service and exploring other options. It's been a habitual problem this year, and so we're gonna hopefully address that. And we, I believe the closing date on that RFP is the 17th of this month, so you know, we might have some ideas and answers at that point. We're also entering the design phase for the rehabbing of Firehouse Company Two. It's got some serious structural damage and we actually have a plan in place that if we have a heavy load or heavy wind or both in, you know, winter storm, we're moving apparatus out of the firehouse to move just other places. So that's how dire it is, so that's something else that's currently right. We're trying to move that along as best we can. Public safety, we just hosted another COVID-19 vaccination clinic and we'll be doing those as we go, you know, as we go forward. And recently, we posted a position for a police officer in anticipation of an upcoming retirement. The next up is economic development. Economic development in the town of East Haddam has been kind of slow, and it's, in my opinion and our board's opinion, that we need to do things more proactively because that's a revenue driver. So if we have more revenue, then obviously we can do more. So one of the things that we need to do is we're working on this redevelopment agency that's, they've been working very hard for a resolution of the East Haddam Village. They're looking at TIF financing proposals and brownfield studies. And we're also working on a Mudus master plan, waiting on a THRIVE grant for technical expertise and a DRC traffic study. We've also got a, hopefully, probably within a couple of weeks maybe, a broadband viability study conclusion, so we're hoping for that. And one of the particular properties that we're interested in is the Brownell property that has been bought and they're renting it. And there's already a, if you didn't know, there's al, always, already a medical rehabber in there, they're doing medical equipment, refurbishing it and selling it. And that's really exciting. And then they're also using some of the building for storage, so if you're looking to store your boat, get in touch with them over there. But there, we're also looking at a couple of other options of people coming in. I've also done some higher ed type work up in Hartford, and we're looking at maybe apprenticeship programs and things like that to go in there, we're talking to our high school. So we've got a lot of good things going on there. We're trying to make this, you know, into, you know, a pretty interesting hub here in Mudus. Mudus is a, is a gem that needs to be redeveloped, and we're working with Cogs, and his suggestion was to tout Mudus as the, what, what was it? The smallest economic development, no, 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 what was it? The, from the seventies, the, oh, shoot, I can't, just went right out of my head. Urban renewal, right. The, the smallest urban renewal disaster in the United States. And that seems to get people's attention because hopefully we can get this THRIVE grant and they can come in and help us to develop some kind of master plan there so that we can make some grants happen. So we're looking forward to seeing what happens there. Moving on to staffing, we have a library director position that we're currently, we've collected 10 applicants for, and we're grading them and rating them as far as who's gonna come in for an interview, and we put together a interview committee. So we're working on that. We have a anticipated retirement, possibly the end of this month for a police officer, so we're, that just recently posted, so we're looking for some applications to come in in that. And another item that we're looking at is we're anticipating hopefully a part-time social services staff person. And that could be shared with another town, you know, where, that could be a shared service kind of a thing. And that way, this would be a new budget item, so I'll have to fight like hell for the Board of Finance to help us out with that. But there's a lot of situations in our town where there's people who bubble up who need services, such as the food bank or the fuel bank or, you know, all these things. And these people who are, who are in the, in that need really are, they are needing other services as well. And, and they, they, again, show up in various different places, and we really don't have the wherewithal here in town to deal with a holistic approach with somebody. You know, we have homeless people, we have people that really needs medical care that don't have anybody in the world, so that our option here in town is just to send them 211 and that's it. And there's nobody here to really be kind of a case manager person, so that's kind of what, where we're looking. We're still doing some research as far as what other towns do and how they do it and all that, but that'll be coming through, and I'm just, this is my, my prelim case to say that this is something that I think it would really serve our town well, and especially for those people that are really struggling and really need that, that help, you know? So that's, those are our, our staffing issues, but like I said, two of those are already in the books, already, that's nothing new, nothing additional funds. The, the anticipated part-time social service staff will be an additional item that we'll be asking for. And then obviously, capital, long-range capital improvements committee, we've been reviewing some capital requests, we'll be reviewing them again in February. We're looking to enter the design phase of the rehab work in Company Two and the firehouse. And we're also looking to form a library facility building committee. Our library, what was our library committee called? It was a study to see, you know, what we really needed in the way of a library, so they've come back with their, their conclusions. There is a library study committee booklet available at the town hall, also at the libraries, for anybody who's interested in taking a look at it. It's very comprehensive, they did a lot of work, it's, 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 it's a great body of work. And so now what we have to do is determine how we actually meet that, those recommendations. So that's something that we'll be looking at. So going into the actual budget and the immediate cost drivers, while we're seeing an overall 8% inflation rate, the town contracted only 3.1 wage rate increase obligation. So we're still looking at wage, you know, increases, but it's not nearly as big as the overall inflation rate, which is a good thing, sort of. Energy costs obviously is going to be a cost driver, obviously the Firehouse Company Two, and the staffing again, more really the, the social services staff person, again, the library director and police officer. I probably shouldn't put it on that slide because they're really already in the budget, but just so that you're aware that those are three things that we'll be looking to fulfill if we can. And then our last slide is basically, you know, the future depends on what we do today. You know, the East Haddam Village redevelopment group that they're working, you know, diligently and getting things going, the Mudus master plan, the broadband, housing and social services, these are all expenditures. They're not, these are not, yes, their wants, yes, their desires, yes, but I think we need to start putting the focus more on these kinds of things, on revenue drivers, most of these, that will put us and position us in a, in a, in a great place. So we're really looking at working with the Board of Finance, obviously Board of Ed, and ourselves to really put some focus in on these areas and what can make, you know, some things happen. I've had discussions with Hope Partnership, they are a housing developer, who's a nonprofit, and they're looking at Mudus as a place where they might want to put some housing in, which is kind of exciting because they pay for it. So I'm trying every different aspect to try and get some things going here in East Haddam and Mudus and, and create some, you know, a great community. We have a great community, our, our community is full of great people, and a lot of them are on these redevelopment agencies and on the broadband, we have exceptional expertise on that, on that committee. And also, we're working with our planning and zoning and EDC for the Mudus master plan, and again, the housing, the social services. So we've got a lot of good things going on, and stay tuned, but this is where we believe we need to go, and those are our areas of focus. And that, I believe is it.
Very well. Thank you, appreciate that. Any Board of Finance questions for the first second? Harvey?
Yeah. It's sort of a, I guess I can form it as a question. Are you planning to provide to the Board of Finance and to the folks in town, a report with respect to where we stand now with social services? What's being done? Where is it being done? At what cost? And, and this is what we got, this is what we're proposing, and here's an organization chart, who reports to whom and so on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ultimately, what we found, Harvey, just to answer your question a bit thorough, more thoroughly, is, is that we have many different people and, and agencies within the town that do certain pieces of it, but nobody shepherds a person, once that person, as I mentioned, bubbles up at the food bank, again, that person really needs other services as well. And there's nowhere that we can send them to say, what do you need for housing? What do you need for this? Do you need a job? Do you need a car? Do you need gas? Do you need fuel? Like nobody's, I mean, they are, I mean, you know, it's our senior senator, our.
Youth and family.
Youth and family, thank you. Our food bank, our fuel bank, these are all separate people that are dealing with this person, but guaranteed, when somebody comes into the fuel bank, they're not necessarily, I mean, we, I remember somebody coming in here for something, I forget what it was, and they didn't even know we had a food bank, and they hadn't eaten in days. It's just like, there's a food bank, you know? And so we got them to the food bank, we got them to hometown. Actually, our police officer went over and bought them a sandwich. But the point being is, is that there's nobody here that's taking that holistic approach to saying, this is what this person needs, and the only thing we can do right now, literally, because we just don't have the capacity, is to say, you gotta dial 911, like in some of these people don't even have phones.
The 211.
So 211, sorry.
Yeah.
211. So yes, we will do all that.
But the other element, which I was sort of remiss not to mention, is it would be useful in such a report to try to identify not only what services do we have and where are they done and so on, and at what cost and all of that, but also, are there services that are needed but are not being provided? And how do you plan to address? If there are, how do you plan to address it? My second question is, town contracts are 3.1% wage rate increase. How many contracts are going to be coming up? And when you say this, I'm assuming you're talking about contracts on the Board of Selectmen side?
Yes, so I have five unions here on the town side, and I have several department heads, and those all have what are called employee, employment agreements. So we are contracted through these employment agreements as well as the union contracts, whether they're existing contracts already in place, or there's actually only one contract that we're working on right now, it's for the firemen. But those are all contracts that are in place that we're obligated to continue those wage, like we're not doing any wage increases, we're obligated already to this, for this increase.
I guess the second part of my question is, during the upcoming fiscal year, are there any contracts that will have to be renegotiated?
I'll check on.
That would be useful to know.
Yeah, there might be one in 2024, but the only one, like I said, that we're currently working on would be the firemen.
Of course, we gotta work 23, 24.
Right, so 23 is the firemen. I have to check for 24, but I think, I don't believe so. Yep.
Is that, Jill, anything?
Nothing at the moment, thank you.
Bruce?
No questions.
No.
Todd?
Yes, I have a few questions, and thank you very much for looking to the future. I'm intrigued by your last page here, areas of focus of these, of these items. Which ones are gonna be significant costs to touch there in East Haddam? Well, we're gonna be looking to federal, state and private funding. What's, what's, do you know of a trend?
Yes and yes. So the East Haddam Village redevelopment, okay, they're probably gonna be talking about some capital expenditures, which means studies that they have to get done, depending on what they think. So we've, we funded them this year for like 27,500, I believe, 27,500, and they're using some of that money right now to do a kind of a overview of the environmental studies that have been already done on that site, and to decide whether or not they need to do further testing, or whether or not the results of those tests can be just culled together and determine whether or not we have enough information to know what to do brownfields-wise. And then there's brownfields grants. So yes, we might need some money for studies because most of the, most grants that I have seen require us to get all the preliminary work and get all of these things like queued up and ready to go, so they're shovel-ready, and then you can apply for the grants. So the monies that I can see that we might be have to, have to spend would be monies that would get us to that shovel-ready process, you know, to that shovel-ready step. So that could mean some study money, could be some plans money, could be some architectural money, so to speak, you know, like with the firehouse, et cetera, we already have that in the works. But, so that's the kind of thing that I see in it, in, in most of these. Now, the Mudus master plan, this USDOT grant, is actually for expertise to put the plan together. So we're actually gonna get, hopefully, if we get it, keep your fingers crossed, pray a lot for us, please, we will get that plan done by people who already have the expertise to do it, and so they've queued us up and we're ready to go on that, which is exciting. And regarding the Mudus master plan, some of it is just making Mudus into a package that a developer would come in and say, I wanna put a housing development, or I wanna do another business, or I wanna do this or that. And some of it also is, there's five phases of a sidewalk plan that's been done in various degrees in the past, and there's a connectivity grant that you can get, and that connectivity grant is perfect to finish those, I think we have two of the phases done, we need three more done. So that connectivity grant would absolutely finish those sidewalks, but we have to have that master plan so that we can go to the connectivity people and say, this is what we want. So that is, that's that. The broadband, that again, we're going through this feasibility study now, that's already in the works, it's already bought and paid for, so to speak. Once we have that, well then we'll know going into it, but, you know, Teresa and I have worked on this, and the broadband money that's out there on the feds and the state side, there's definitely funds there, but we'll have to see whether or not that feasibility study gets us close enough that we can say, this is enough to get us to the shovel-ready. It may not be, we may have to do another study of some kind, but we won't know until we actually know whether or not it's even feasible. So we're doing the small step first, and then we'll go into the next step depending on where it is. So again, I'm hoping that with the federal monies and the state monies that are out there for broadband, that maybe we can get something done in town without the town, you know, paying for it, or at least we would come up with some matching funds for it. So we'll have to see what that is, but we're not there yet, I don't have the actual numbers to give you yet. Housing, again, same kind of thing in regards to the Mudus master plan, if we can get that, housing is probably the, the one place where housing would be best, would be Mudus. So until we have that planned, then we don't know, but again, I'm working with the Hope Partnership first as the first possibility here as to whether or not we can get something through them. And again, that's a nonprofit that actually comes in and develops, just, they do it. So that's nothing on the town that I know of at this point. Social services, as I've mentioned, this is probably something that we would fund, and this is something that would be a line item because I don't wanna use, you know, any kind of grant or something on this, just for the simple fact that eventually the grant money rolls out, and then all of a sudden you're left with having to fire somebody because, or letting somebody go because you don't have the funds. So I'd rather make that a line item. So that would be something that we would put on there. But I'm looking at a part-time or a shared service kind of thing, depending on the, the volume, you know, it's, it's gonna depend on what we actually need to, to Harry's, or Harvey's point.
Okay, thank you very much. So these monies will be this year, this coming year, will, these monies coming out of, out of East Haddam?
Some of them.
Oh.
Some, yeah.
Okay. I must encourage you, you probably know this already, but I, I attended the CCM conference back in November, very interesting conversations on grants and also broadband. And Mr. Biden is holding back millions, hundreds of millions of dollars on broadband. I don't know why, but he is, and, and the sooner, we were told, the sooner we get our ore in the water, get our ducks lined up, the better the chance we're gonna get some funding from the federal government.
We're actually ahead of, of, of a lot.
Yeah, I would say, I think we're ahead of most communities, and the kind of way the grants are structured, we've been paying attention to. So they're kind of geared towards open access models, which is what we're looking at, they're geared towards underserved communities, which is one of the things that, one of the ways that will also fit in. So making sure that the way that we're moving forward fits the grants that are out there.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yeah.
Who is, so the library director is now gone. I was listening to the last Board of Selectmen meeting, so who is standing in as of now for his position?
We have two branch managers, one in each library, so they're holding their own and I'm helping them out and.
Okay.
Yeah, they're work, they're working, they're doing great things, actually. They're kind of excited because they're, they got a little bit of free range there because they're, the boss is away, but they're doing good things, no, yes, they're doing fine. Yeah, we have Pat over in Rathbun, and then we've got Joe here at the East Haddam Frey, so.
Yeah, I did reach out to let them know that I'm their liaison, so I just wanted to see.
Oh, perfect.
Who?
Great.
It is, so.
Yeah, it's Joe Riley and Pat Griswold.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Rebecca, also? No, that's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Board of Education? Anything? You have anything, Sarah?
Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm joined here by Ms. Stricker, are, just gonna answer all the hard questions, so, and we'll go from there. Just a few things, one is, our calendar is very similar to what you heard from the first selectman. We have subcommittee meetings that go through each department scheduled, they're up on the, where the agendas are on the website, and we'll be doing that at pretty much every Tuesday and Thursday for the next few weeks, with a few breaks, so you definitely wanna look at the schedule.
So you are easthaddamschools.org? We are easthaddam.org, so just, so you know they're on two different websites.
Excellent point. So, and, and then we come to the end of this month and hopefully have a plan to kind of consolidate, and that really kicks off tomorrow when I present to the Board of Education a budget, the superintendent's budget, and then they work from there. We have been successfully working through our strategic plan, which focuses on achieving, relating, constructing and developing. So, so achieving for our students, relating to our community and making sure we're using the resources that the beautiful community has, constructing, looking at what our needs are, going towards the future, and developing. So what are some of the accomplishments of that over the past year? We had our state champions and the cross-country team. We had, for the first time, we did not have a gap in our math achievement with the SAT, which has been a longstanding goal of the board. Our athletic complex, after years and years of desires to have it, and is ready to break ground in March, thank you for everybody who's participated in that. We've increased our participation in early ECE classes and advanced placement classes, and we've also added an opportunity for our students to connect with Goodwin College University, used to be college, and that gives them an opportunity to do courses in manufacturing and achieve dual credit. Our math programs in K8 are really fully running, they're essentially in the last two years, they're new, and we have three full pre-K kindergarten programs that are full and fabulous. So, that's where we're starting for achievements. When we had asked the Board of Education for their, for their priorities, we focused on looking at a balance of online and print materials, and to increase our hands-on learning. We looked at a focus on culture and diversity in our field trips, professional development for our teachers, enhancement of our VOTEC and our special education inclusion programs. Continue our math emphasis with our new program implementation, supporting our strategic plan, increasing our civic opportunities for our students, and our security focus, which looks like an additional security officer. So, what's on the horizon for us? The, the, the expectation around HVAC and air quality continues to increase. I think it's increased every year we've been here. We are, just to head off Mr. Thomas's question, we are, we will be starting the first year of our teacher contract. We'll be starting the first, we are starting negotiations, but this budget will require us to start the first year of our non-certified contract. And then we will next year be negotiating with our administrators for the following year. So, two contracts will be new for next year. One, we know is around 3.6%, and one, we do not know, because we're just starting negotiations. In terms of on the horizon, we've had a year of some, some significant needs at the high school. And I foresee that we're going to have to look at some kind of renovation at the high school, as many, a number of the systems seem to need to be renovated. And we'll see that in the capital plan later. One of which is the stage lighting, which kind of caught us by surprise. Apparently, the lights are no longer available, part of that whole change to efficiency, which is a little more, quite costly. If you remember back in 2015, we had a referendum that worked through the elementary school driveway and sidewalk renovation. And, and so, and it, it took care of the front and to the right side, and made that beautiful loop that's over on the right. However, when we went to finish that project, one of the alternates was to take care of the sidewalks and the driveway to the left. That's continued to deteriorate, and we're at the point where we're going to have to start budgeting for that. So, what's driving our operating budget? Fuel prices. Heating oil, diesel, gasoline, propane, as the Selectmen pointed out. They are, and I'm sure your home bills are focused on. Electricity continues to go up as well. Transportation. Our transportation is a strange piece, where it's not that moving students around is more expensive, it's that we're having constant issues with the fact that there's just not enough drivers to drive. And that's a, that's an issue that's at least countrywide, and potentially farther than that. So, one of the other drivers is, we are actually able to do some of the field trips that we were not able to do before. We're actually able to offer a full athletics program at both of the middle and high school, and that drives some of those costs up as well. We are finding our students to have some additional needs these days in our special education program. So, there are some needs there. And just, you know, inflation with a capital I, everything but to pencils, to paper, to anything you buy, which eggs is just significantly more than it's been in years. And as I said before, we are experiencing some issues with our aging facilities. They're requiring some more increased, some increased maintenance. And we have run into, I think, our, at least, our third fairly sizable project, where we're being told by the vendors that the parts are just no longer available, that they've changed the standards. And, and my suspicion is maybe that was, that process of them becoming unavailable was sped up by the manufacturing crisis that's in place, where there's just not a lot of, there's not a lot of excess materials available at this point. So, that's kind of the quick overview. Again, we are at the very beginning of our process. We are getting it really going next, tomorrow night at 7:00, and we'll be moving on from there. So.
Thank you very much. Let's start on Rebecca's end.
Yeah, I do have a question. I noticed that you have an additional security officer for the next budget year. Is that for one particular school?
So, one of the, so what, right now, the situation is we have two security officers, and we obviously use the SRO as well. And the idea when the, the idea presented initially was that there'd be a security officer at each school at all times. Right now, the SRO kind of fills in when the security officer, when the school does not have one. So, we do rotate the security officers through the different schools. We want them to know all the kids, and the kids to be very comfortable with them and staff. And that's an important part of the security program.
So, I guess what I'm asking, I think there's going to be three with the next budget year. So, is there going to be one at each building at all times?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay. All right. And I noticed you're talking about math on here specifically. Can you go into a little detail? I mean, I always assume math is taught, so I'm just wondering why that's brought up.
So, when, eight years ago, our math, I believe, the numbers were, our average in math was about 15 points below the state average. And this past year, our math scores are 20 points above the state average, so. And our English score, language art scores on the SAT were always pretty strong. However, we always were dealing with that math, a gap in our math achievement.
So, is this a new curriculum, or is that why you're bringing it up?
It's a whole collection of, of, of changing curriculums. It's just, it's an accomplishment. I think it was a, it's a long-term goal. It's something that, when I came here nine years ago, they were talking about it being an old goal that had been around for a long time. So, it's just exciting that we've really moved forward. And the context is interesting as well, because the state average, even though ours has continued to increase, the state average has actually dropped, so, in the same timeframe, probably due to the pandemic.
That's all I have, thank you. Todd?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and, well, I actually have one question. And it's a deal with what, what we've done in the past, or we're doing the present, and how's that guide us to the future? In fact, it reminds me of Mahatma Gandhi's quote, which is very uniform and applicable. "The future depends on what we do in the present." Thing is very true. And I was struck by a statistic that I caught, an article that I read, I read a lot. This is from, "It's the percent growth of population in public schools between the year 2000 and 2019." The source is the Center for Education Statistics and the US Department of Education. And these statistics kind of struck me hard. The growth in students across the country in the time period 2000, 2019 was 7.6%. The growth in teacher positions in that same time period in this country was 8.7%. The growth in district administrators was 87.6%, 10 times the rate for teachers, and over 10 times higher than, than students. That's pretty interesting. What I'd like to know is, how does East Haddam compare to those statistics from the year 2000, 2019? Where we been, and where we going? I know, I can't expect you to answer the question today, but the next time we meet, I should like to see it.
So, starting what year?
2000.
2000? And ending 2019?
Correct.
And that's admin, teachers, and?
District administrators.
Oh, just the administrators?
Yeah. The students went up by 7.6%. The teacher positions went up by 8.7%. And I kind of expect that, improving the teacher-student relationship. The district administrators, that's, I guess that's all administrators in the district, 87.6%.
So, and that's a, that's a national statistic, not a East Haddam or Connecticut statistic.
That's why I'm asking about East Haddam. I want to know.
Right.
Because I want to know where our money is going to spend.
Be happy to look that up. I know since, in the last nine years, the overall number has decreased by one, so. Which out of six is a pretty decent percentage, but let me get you the specifics.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to add on one thing. When you're looking at those statistics, just be aware that sometimes a teacher might hold a administrative certificate, but still be teaching. So, we have to, you have to kind of dissect where, where those numbers are from. There's many senior teachers now that are holding the O9 twos and, and things. They're, they're able to step in the position of a superintendent or a special education manager. So, they might be holding dual ones as well, just to kind of level up that skew.
That's a good, that's a good point, and that's why it's nice to have a local school to go to, and people can tell us those answers for our, our school district.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just had one question. So, the SRO is in the police budget?
Okay.
And the securities would be in the school budget?
Okay.
Thank you. Bruce?
No questions.
Mr. Corbett?
Uh, nothing at the moment, thank you.
And Harvey? Anything?
It would be.
You tried.
Did I at least take one off?
I think.
As one of my granddaughters like to say, "It's traditional." So, I am required to, by tradition, to ask if, when you come back with the details of your budget, if you would be kind enough to include population trends and some forward-looking projection. My impression is that they've leveled off, but it would be, I think, useful to have some idea of that. The second is, and I suppose I should know this, the SRO is a sworn officer. He's a, went to the State Police Academy to get to be a real policeman. The security folks are, are not sworn officers.
So, is, is the question in there? What, what certifications are the security folks? Is that the inherent question, or do you just want a, "Yes, they're not sworn officers"?
That's a good answer. That's all I needed to know. And now, it might be interesting for folks to know a little bit more about, you, you mentioned increasing civic opportunities for students. And just briefly, what, what does that entail? I mean, and we expect to be, to see the high school-backed student in the first select person's chair next week, or what, what's the deal?
Well, I think some of that, some of that needs to continue to be flushed out. But I think, because it's really about, what do we want to focus on for next year's budget? But essentially, yes, having students, you know, not necessarily the select person's chair, but, but to be involved with, with our town government, to get them more involved, to have them experience. I know there's been some, I think where some of this came from, I know there's been some excitement around having them make sure they're off for the, the second Tuesday in November, to kind of have them, have that opportunity to be part of that. I know there's also, we really want them to be engaged in the Veterans Day and the Memorial Day work around the schools, to make sure that they're having, make sure that they're having those opportunities, so, because it's important.
I, I suppose I'm dating myself severely here, but one of the required courses when I was in high school, and it might even been when Todd and Bruce were in high school, included something that was either called civics or government. So, what are the three branches? How does something to get to be a law, blah, blah, blah? Is, how, is that, or how is that integrated into the curriculum now? And not in great detail, but just briefly.
So, and I usually tell any of my administrators to look at your policy when you go about this. Don't answer off the cuff. But we do have a civics class, and I believe either students take the civics class, or they take a government class that has all of the components of civics in it. So, there's two different versions.
Is that an elective or a requirement?
No, they, they must take one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Civics requirement.
Thank you. I, I guess I still have hope. And that, my last question is one that I'm, I think it might help us to hear a little bit more about, is you spoke, you referred to some increased special ed needs, requirements, and so on. If you could say a little bit more about that, is that because of an increased population of people needing special ed? Or is it because the needs of the folks, that the population is relatively stable, but the needs have changed, increased, or whatever?
It's actually both.
Okay.
There, there was a lot of, you know, one of the things I think we heard about in the earlier report, there was a lot of real estate movement in the last two years. Well, some of that movement was, you know, an influx of students. We, we actually have a very similar number, but there, there was a lot of change in the last couple of years. So, there's, there's also change. And seemingly, my colleagues and I around this area seem to have the same process, where we seem to have all taken in some, some additional kids with some additional needs. But there's also needs that I think, and, you know, that, I don't have any specific research for it. But I also think the pandemic left some needs, or exposed some, that we're dealing with now as well, and students needing some additional support. And, and it probably makes sense, given the disruption that that was, that it would cause some issues. And, you know, it's, it's caused other issues around families and finances. And some people have done okay, but others have, you know, had a difficult time, so. All of that kind of, we see it in our kids, so.
I just want to address the, your question in regard to security, SRO. The, the security officers at the school, this is more for even the audience listening, they are retired police officers, so they are highly skilled and highly trained. I just don't want you to think that we're looking at anybody being able to apply for those positions. The S, the difference between the SRO and the security is that, that the SRO is managed by the town as far as scheduling. So, if there's other town things that the SRO is assigned to or wants to be assigned to, that is a different kind of relationship. So, the security officers would be assigned to a particular school within the district. So, I just want to make sure that that's just kind of clear.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry, Patty.
No, 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 go ahead, Harvey.
So, in effect, well, let me start with a question. Is one of the, is, is then one of the job requirements that you have for applying, a hiring someone as a security officer, that they be a retired officer, or?
I, I believe that it is written in there. What I can do is, why don't we get you a copy of the job description that we just recently filled? Because that would answer your questions.
So, they have to have a certain amount of experience as a police officer, and they have to also keep their certifications, that they left the police department with.
At present, they are retired sworn officers.
Yes.
Correct.
And the only remaining question, question would be, if somebody who's been bagging groceries at Stop &amp; Shop walks in and applies, are they eligible or not, because they aren't sworn, have never been sworn?
They won't need the qualifications.
Right. State legislation mandates that we, they have, essentially, they have to be, have at least 10 years in the police work. have at least 10 years in the police work and.
Okay, that answers.
Have all, they have to keep their certifications.
That answers. I should have asked the question that way. Thank you.
They have to pass a course prior to starting in a school, no matter if it's here or anywhere. So those qualifications are very, very strict on those.
Yeah.
And then I just wanted to follow up to, and piggyback to what Mr. Reese said in regard to the community relations. There's quite a bit of that, especially with our VOTEC and our VAWAG. Our V agriculture has been working and doing some gardening and things of that nature up at Harris property. The invention convention, which is at the middle school, really kind of looks to find mentors that are out there within our community to help to invent what they're doing or bringing other people in to the school, to kind of talk to them. And the same goes for the history day and the senior project day. So those are some connections that we're trying to make with the, with the community. And that's all I had.
Can I just speak to the SRO and that kind of thing? And in regards to being the chief of police, I can tell you that our SRO is 100% in the schools when school is in session. So the only time that the town uses the SRO is if there's not school being held that day. And then he would then have duties within the town, or special duty, or private duty, or whatever. But if school is in session, he is in the schools, and he really does answer to the schools and what the schools are requiring of the SRO to do. So my understanding is, his first and only fo, focus is the school when school is in session. And then during the summer, he's actually working with the, with the camp, with the school, with the kids. So he's not really our purview necessarily, but when school is on, he's in the school. So we don't have any say as to where he is, other than.
The day he's not in school.
Martin Luther King Day.
Okay. We have space for guest and audience comments for the board of selectmen and the board of ed. Does anybody have a question for our two boards? Just, for, say your name and, and speak up.
So my name is Maureen Goff, and I'm the town treasurer, for those of you who don't know me. And I just wanted to come before the tri-board and raise an issue that has been kind of percolating around since August regarding the board of ed accounts payable checks, and who signs them, and who should sign them, and how they should be signed. So I just have a little statement I wanted to read as far as like where this, we've been with this situation, what's happened so far, and where we are now. So if you'll just bear with me for a second. When I started as treasurer, I was informed that the current procedure for the board of ed accounts payable checks was that the signatures were printed electronically on the checks at the time the check was issued. As treasurer, I would receive a check register that listed the check numbers, amounts, and the payees for the checks. And that register would provide me with the backup to initiate a transfer of funds from the town general fund to the board of ed accounts payable. I noticed that the names of some payees were redacted on the check register that I was receiving. I contacted the board of education office and was told that those small amounts, 15 to $40, were checks made payable to students, and that their names were redacted for privacy purposes. However, over the next month or so, there were larger checks for 15,000, and then a very large check for approximately 250,000. When I asked what those checks were for, I was told they were attorneys and special education costs, and that I could not see the name of the payee. If I did, I might be able to guess who the student involved with the situation was. So in August, I met with Brian to request an unredacted copy of the check register. I explained that the redacted check registers amounted to me signing blank checks. I was told that these checks were part of the student's educational records and covered by FERPA, and as such, I could not see that payee information. So I met with First Selectman Haynes to request help determining the role of the treasurer in the check signing process, and she reached out to the town's attorney for his opinion on the matter. In September, board of education member Patty Stricker, who is the second signer on the account, requested that her electronic signature no longer be used. At that time, I met with board of ed chair Mark Piscotti, board of finance chair Tracy Chianta, superintendent Brian Reese, first selectman Haynes, finance director Rob Funk, and by phone, town attorney Tim Herbst, and suggested that maybe my name should come off if, if I was not the person who could be reviewing the invoice information. Maybe somebody else's name, who would have that authority, should be the signer. You know, check signers are responsible for ensuring that the checks are presented for payment that they're legitimate, prepared according to procedure. By requiring two signatures, there's a built-in double check that both signers agree the payment is proper. The requirement of two signatures reduces the likelihood that any improper checks will be written. Accounting best practices suggest that a person not sign a blank check. They review each check to verify the payee and the amount being paid. If there's a payee that the check signer is not familiar with, they should request the backup documentation. I'm not able to abide by any of those longstanding best practices. In addition to that, signatories on checks can be held liable or subject to criminal investigation for signing checks drawn fraudulently or illegally. So during that September meeting that I had with everyone, the town attorney maintained that after his review of applicable statutes, town and board of ed policies, procedures, and bylaws, I did not have a defined role as a check signer. Her, Brian, and Mark Piscotti, they had been told by the board of education attorney that I absolutely had to be a signer on the checks, and my name had to be on each board of ed AP check. It was decided that we would let the two attorneys get together and discuss the opposing issues. However, after the September meeting, through much research and reading of policies, I agreed with the board of ed statement that I, I should be a signer. As town treasurer, I should be a signer on the checks. And my efforts from that point forward were finding a way to ensure that the town was following the privacy protections of FERPA, but also ensuring that I could perform my duties as treasurer to, you know, industry best practices. So in December, the board of attorney, board of education attorney provided his position in writing. However, everything, sort of the things that he mentioned in his position referred to the authority of the board of ed to spend their budget, which was never what was in question, was never the issue. In the meantime, between the meeting and the response from the board of ed attorney, I reached out to the state department of education, and they did think that these checks could likely be educational records, and they provided me a copy of a nondisclosure agreement that they use when third parties need to have access to FERPA protected documents. So I suggested that something similar could be drawn up for me. At the same time, first selectman Haynes reached out to surrounding towns to see how they were handling the situation, and I reached out to the Connecticut Council of Municipalities for the same information for towns throughout the state, kind of similar-sized towns. So we heard back from 10 towns. Four towns were in regional school districts, so the town doesn't participate in the board of ed check process. Five towns allowed the check signer to have access to all the board of education invoices, and there was one town that did not. Finally, since the concern of the board of education was the violation of FERPA regulations, I reached out to the federal department of education, and the response I received from them is that I am an outsourced school official with a legitimate educational interest in seeing these records, these checks, unredacted check registers, check documentation. Throughout all of this, the response from the board of ed chair was that I must sign the checks, but that I do not have the authority to see the documentation related to these checks. Considering that this has been the position of the board of ed from the beginning, I was surprised to get an email from Liberty Bank on Thursday, this past Thursday, letting me know that Mr. Reese had dropped off a letter regarding the matter. And according to the email I received from Liberty Bank, the letter stated that I had requested that my name be taken off the account. So based on the response from the federal department of education, that I do have a legitimate reason to see the checks, the recommendation of the state of Connecticut Department of Education, that I could see the requested documentation with an NDA, the fact that surrounding towns have similar processes as well, and that, the fact that review of checks supporting documentation is an accounting best practice that the town and board of education should have in place to ensure the proper application of taxpayers' money, I would request that the town treasurer be allowed to see this documentation and not continue the process of essentially signing blank checks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything to say?
Maureen, I have a question. When you received the notification from Liberty Bank asking to have you removed, did you request that?
I have not requested that, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think you guys can adjourn. We'll take maybe a five-minute recess and.
Well, wait a minute, ma'am. We just got a, a request from the town treasurer. How's it going to be answered?
It's not.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, and it's not a, it's, it's really not relevant to this meeting.
I understand that.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the history, and I appreciate all of that. I was gonna bring it up, you know, now that she's given us the whole history and everything, in board of finance, just to give you guys a quick synopsis of what had happened. And in my view, it's an operational issue. It is not a board of finance issue. It is how these, you know.
It's a process.
It's a process issue. It's not a, a issue that the board of finance has any purview over at all. I was in on the meeting, and I, I participated in the, that email chain quickly. I, I, it's not a back and forth. We're not going to have that right here. So I think this part of our tri-board meeting is concluded, and we can let these guys go, and then we can continue on with our meeting when they're done. So if we can have a five-minute recess, can I have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Don't move.
Should we adjourn first?
Do we need to adjourn first?
Oh, okay. So you guys adjourn.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Eric Bill.
Second, Teresa Govert.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Teri Garrity.
Second, Kira Thompson.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, and so board of finance, five-minute recess. Thank you.
And cameras are still on.
What's that?
I was just asking, how do we turn this off?
Just, you know, you know how you pause? How do you pause? Yeah, it doesn't pause. It's live.
You're done. You don't have to worry about this.
But as far as what the YouTube channel sees. Oh, they're seeing, okay, okay.
As Thursday, as Thursday, I actually want to talk to you about.
I do.
Right, we'll talk about it tomorrow, just because I gotta get ready to pack and all of that stuff. So if it's not, if the agenda for Thursday is not closed again, you know, and then I'll also get some, her over the bridge for the.
Yeah, in fact, that's something to.
Well, we can't wait too long. Tomorrow's meeting is so long. Well, it's only in progress, but we're just talking.
It's just about the bridge.
It's about the bridge.
The mic, the microphone, realize that. The 27? Okay, look forward to it. Thank you very much.
You have wonderful staff, I just want to tell you that.
Todd, how are you?
I'm all right.
Excellent. Your holidays were good?
Yeah, they were good.
Excellent.
I, I got a little, I didn't look forward to going back to work. That's how good they were.
It's a nice problem to have, right? Oh, that's great.
Still took me a week to recover.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fun this time of year.
Can you see water?
No, it's, it's the mud is resonating in me. It's the refilled bottle from the tank. See, I actually get this from my fancy job and drink, you know, from, from there.
And now you just look contentious.
Now, now I'm pretentious. Don't worry. See?
We can spread out a bit.
Right now, you're on your facebag. You don't want to be that close?
Yeah. It's the New Englander in me, you know, thrift and.
Of course.
They're good for a couple of uses.
Oh, yeah. Although technically, my, is that glass or is that?
The problem is, I have, you know, nice stuff, the travel coffee mug, you know, and then the children get into them at a certain point.
Oh.
And then they just disappear.
Well, that's, oh my God, I must have a thousand of them.
Right, well, yeah.
Then they multiply. You put them in the cabinet, and then all of a sudden, it's like, how do I have 20?
Multiply, but not with any of the complete set.
Because I was going to say, not with matching hats or anything like that. Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, so I'm just, but, but that's okay, because that's much more, it's much more my speed to do it a little. Little, I'll bring a little, little white trash to the party, I like to think.
You can scooch down if you want. How you clo, how you turn that part off?
I don't imagine anybody wants to stare at that.
I don't see a remark.
Okay, our five minutes are up. Let's go home.
You're ready to call it, huh?
I'm ready to call.
Yeah, that, that's.
Fair enough.
The youngest son is a police officer in Farmington.
Oh, right, right, right.
He doesn't have to be on patrol now. He's in tried your training.
No kidding?
And so what, they had a couple of weekends ago. Was for the Farmington officers, an active shooter drill in school where they, they had, you know, trained guys, they had my son running around as, as though he was the bad guy. And it was.
He's a short stroke.
Right. It was a practically all-day thing.
It's a draft, whatever you feel.
Better you do that.
You did your research.
And one of the.
And what are conclusions?
He had established.
You've got to take a pretty complex text here, all the different stuff we found. To get it down something simple and short.
You can't have the thing that they hadn't tested.
And we may do it in two articles, we may do it in one. And don't care yourself. It's a working meeting.
Leary of having this done. It was on a Saturday. But he attended, he was done, he said.
I understand. I got the same problem.
No kidding, yeah.
And there's actually three or four different state laws.
If you don't practice, you don't win.
And he emailed, he sent us.
I was also showing Mr. Rebecca, it's a history of our, our grand list.
Just written down, mm? That's good.
You, you can see in here what.
It sounded to me like the.
An old example, but the most obvious example was the mill rate went from 51 down to 20. In a year that, when the grand list jumped from 25 million to 62.
I mean, right or wrong.
So it just shows that historically, when we have a big jump in the grand list, you do see a decline. I'll bring that tomorrow.
We're not piling new ground here, so people think that this is something unusual. It's not.
We're not piling new ground here, so people think that this is something unusual. It's not.
Or even here. So that's, that's a good point, too.
Yeah, it is.
You know, because we could end up there. But I think our grand list did grow.
Somewhere in the neighborhood between thirty and forty percent.
Not official yet.
Timely umbrella is an example here, twenty-seven to twenty. This one's.
Alright, if we can't.
You know, not that good of an example, because it went down. But I think that would be a good example of what would probably happen in our situation.
Okay. We're still recording, alright, just don't stand up. Don't worry.
Interesting stuff. Thank you, Rob.
We won't project anything.
It was a beautiful town.
Alright, we're back. Boys and girls. Okay, we are on item number five. Approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two?
Kelston, so moved, Kelston.
Thank you. A second?
Second, Watley.
Thank you. All those in favor, or any?
Aye.
Any additions?
I have additions and corrections.
Thank you. Page two. I got ahead of myself, Harvey.
It's okay.
Page.
Page two, item B.I., communications.
Uh-huh.
The last paragraph under communication session. I wanna add a sentence. At the end of the paragraph, during the discussion, the finance director article was postponed.
Okay.
It leads us to think that.
Oh, okay.
That's next on the agenda. It was initially, but during our discussion at the meeting.
Okay.
The finance director's article was postponed.
So you wanna say during?
The discussion, or this discussion.
Joe, can you close the door?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. During this discussion.
The finance director's article was postponed.
Finance director's article was postponed. Okay. Add that in. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, that's very important. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very nice. Correspondence. There was an email that, I don't know if everybody saw, I'm not sure what emails it's going to. From Lori Dequilla from East Haddam Ambulance, which I have not had a chance to look at. So, it went to all of us. But again, I'm not sure what. What email address is. I can't get it to go. I think, I think she sent it to everybody's easthaddam.org, which I'm not sure if everybody gets or has access to, so.
Was that recently or?
It was this, today at noon.
Oh, that's why I missed it.
Yeah, twelve-twenty. So I will look at that and then I'll send it out to you guys on the emails that you do get. And we'll figure that out. So anyway, that came in today and I just haven't had a chance to get it. That's for correspondence. Is there anything else, Rob? I don't think there's anything else.
Not that I'm worried about.
Okay. Chairman's report, so you heard about the treasurer situation. Again, I don't think it's a Board of Finance discussion. I was part of it at the beginning because they were looking for some history and, you know. Lucky me, I've been around for a while. And. It's a process issue. It's an internal control. One thing I'll say that was not mentioned is that we have been audited for every year since this has been going on and it has never come up in an audit report. It has never come up as an issue in an audit report. So.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
In the lengthy. It's a recap of what went on. It was, I don't remember that our auditors were one of the people, one of the groups that was consulted. And they do business all over the place. And the only dog that the Board of Finance would have in this fight is if the audit controls were not being enforced. And so, you might, if you're so moved, make a suggestion that they write to the auditors and ask for an opinion.
Okay. Get to that. The auditors are still in process, so we might even be able to do that right now.
Yeah, but, I mean, other than that, I don't see as we have a dog in this fight.
Right. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I have a couple of things to say, at least one, is that we kinda do have a dog in this fight because we're responsible for the annual audit. And so, our job, I would think implicitly, is to, is to control wasteful or extravagant spending. Wasteful being incorrect spending is certainly wasteful. And audits.
It's not.
Just a minute. Signing blank checks is not, to me, a good way to do business, no matter where you are. So, the auditor has told us a number of times, every year, that they cannot catch everything in the audit. If you point them to this, they probably would have said something, to Harvey's point, and they weren't pointed. So, I agree with Harvey a hundred percent. We need to consult with our auditor.
Alright, we can do that. Anybody else? I'm gonna chime in.
Rebecca did send me an email, so we had a slight discussion about it, but very similar. Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, being BOF, I think our responsibility is to set the dollar amount. But I do think it is an area to look into, so I think an auditor question would actually be a really good.
Okay.
Approach. Send their email along.
So I did reach out to the auditor back in October. I'm just looking back to find what the answer was, but I.
Okay.
The auditor said that it wasn't.
Or ask him again.
Right. Tax collector's report in color. That says of one five. The second page. Any questions on that? All good. Subcommittee report. Communications.
Communications, the, any of us can speak, add to what I'm about to say, but we had our article on the budget process, which printed in the East Haddam News last Thursday. Thank you very much, Rob, for helping out there. It's a nice, clear read, so people can read it, and it's very good. Appreciate that very much. And right now, the committee, subcommittee is busily working on the next article. It's about explaining the revaluation reassessment process and what it means to mill rate and property owners' taxes. And we've done a little bit of homework already, came up with eighteen items of information. That, it's actually kinda complicated, but we, our task now is to take it and make it less complicated and compile the article that's short and sweet and to the point and clear. And it may be a challenge to do it in six hundred words or less, but we're gonna try. If not, we'll do it in two parts, but our goal is to make it simple. And anything else from Bruce or Rebecca?
I think we got some good information from Rob. He just showed us tonight some historical numbers as it pertains to revaluations. I think that'll be really helpful. But we're meeting tomorrow night at six-thirty, I believe.
That's correct.
Interested. Municipal building.
In meeting room number four.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the article that appeared in the paper. A nice kickoff, and I think this one is timely. It'll be, it'll be perfect timing for the, what's going on out there. Long Range Capital Improvement Committee. I still have to fix this problem. Apparently we're only, we'd have to have a Democrat on there and Joe and I are both Republicans, so I need to fix this problem. But we did have two meetings with the minutes provided. And got through a lot of the process. I went back and I looked at the end and I just could not stop laughing because it was the funniest thing I think I've ever seen in a meeting. God brings up a comment about, it's a truck, right? A truck. It only turns right? Left. It will only turn left. And we just were cracking up. I just, it was the end of the night. We were punch drunk, but it was an sad article. So anyway, if you're in for a laugh, look at the end of the second meeting. Any, what's the next scheduled meeting?
It's the ninth of February at five o'clock.
Alright, so I will sort out who's gonna be on the committee by then. I do, okay. And financial policy. Something Harvey couldn't wanna add?
Yeah, the general fund revenue sources section is ready to be sort of reviewed and edited by whomever.
Okay.
And. I, I think I mentioned, it would make life easier, well, certainly for me, but maybe for all of us if we were to ask Cindy Varicki or if she'd.
Okay.
Run through it. She, Bob and I can run through it and then give it to you in draft form.
Okay. Do that. Do you wanna reach out to her yourself or?
Sure. Sure, I don't mind doing that.
One thing to add to policy subcommittee, just to put on the, on the horizon, is that the cemetery group would like to. Put in a capital request to try to be able to do some work on cemeteries, but in a capital manner so that they're able to carry over funds from one year to the next if. Because some years, the amount of work that they, they need to do, I guess, is more than what an annual budget would be, but just so that they can plan on that. And probably the best way to handle that would be to write a policy for the cemetery fund to be able to. Set that up accordingly. So, just something to put on the horizon.
Okay, I think we can look and see where their money comes from and goes, yeah, on that, on the chart, okay. But they do not have a capital account now, right?
They do not have a capital account. They just have an operating account. Or they're, they're one of the operating departments.
Okay.
And actually, one of the items later on the agenda is a grant that we're requesting that is to assist with the upkeep and rehabilitation of cemeteries.
Okay. Liaison reports. Redevelopment agency, did they?
We, we haven't.
Okay.
Met since.
It was the holidays.
Yeah, the last time I reported to you, so.
Perfect. So, first selectman's report, I think we got a good. Overview of what's going on from the budget presentation. Okay, and Rob, finance director's report.
Really, in the financial report, nothing jumping out at this point. We're five months into the year. We've collected more than five-twelfths of the revenue and spent a little, pretty close to five-twelfths of the budgeted expenditures. So it's, it's pretty consistent with where we were last year at the same time. A couple of things to point out in the revenues, in, excuse me. On the old page here. In miscellaneous revenues, we have a pretty large amount of revenue that's collected there that shows us to be higher than budget. And that is the opioid settlement.
Okay.
Because we got paid five, the five years of payments all at once, and that actually needs to be moved into its own fund. We need to set up a fund separately for that settlement because there are restrictions on how we can use those funds. I haven't gotten the details on what exactly the restrictions are, but in other words, we couldn't just use it to pay for something that has nothing to do with. Social services or improving. Circumstances of people that, that could be or could have been affected by opioid misuse. There really wasn't anything particularly remarkable in the, the report. Collector of Revenue is a slight unfavorable variance because most of the expense happens in the first mailing and billing of the year. Town Clerk is a bit under budget and that's because recordings and postage and special programs is under budget, and I expect that that'll even out as the year goes on. The Open Space Committee is over budget substantially as it was last month, and I checked into that, and what that is, is it's for property appraisals. We budget each year roughly what one appraisal would cost, and there actually were three appraisals that were done this year. There are no other appraisals on the horizon, so. I don't expect that we'll be farther over budget than we already are, and we don't have anything on the horizon for what appraisals that we would do next year, so it kinda. If you look at a group of years, it's, it's, you know, I mean, it wouldn't make sense to budget ten thousand or twelve thousand dollars for next year because we're over budget this year. Transfer station expenses are a little bit under budget, and I think that has more to do with timing of bills, but we're gonna be looking more closely into that to see if we're seeing some savings from the composting. Lakes Association hasn't spent any of their budget yet.
Interesting.
Principal and interest shows that there's no expense. It's booked when the payments are made, and the payments were actually made in December. As is, is in the debt service schedule, so this report is through November, so that's why you don't see any expense there. Fringe benefits is tracking just about two percent higher than budget. And that, that is because we have a few people that went on to the insurance that we hadn't anticipated would, or went on to insurance at a higher level than what we hadn't anticipated. Library fees and fines is, we're collecting at, at a higher rate than budget. And I'm not exactly sure why, but we just, we had a rather large deposit a month ago. Nothing else really that stands out. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Might not be for you, might be for Harvey, but. The open space budget, when you say they come in with X amount of money or whatever, and I know you don't know what's coming, but. If we budgeted, you know, thirty-two hundred and then they go and spend seven thousand, what's the point of the budget?
I will. The next open space meeting, we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you. If you could relay the question. Okay, I need, we can get through all of it and then we can ask questions when you're done, but I just wanted to get that on. Budget calendar.
Can we ask questions about this?
You wanna ask? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to ask, under public safety, the last line, tree care removal. We've only spent thirty-six thousand dollars so far out of a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollar budget. Is that fair?
Yes.
Because there are a number of trees left to cut. In fact, there's one on my road that's dead, crashing down.
Yeah.
And I see there's other trees in town as well that are in a similar state. And dead trees are actually more, more dangerous than live trees with broken branches. So, I just make sure there's enough money left. It looks like there is. That's good.
Yeah, I know that there was a lot of activity when I first started working for East Haddam. In August, I saw it happening. It's quite interesting. But since then, there's been some personnel changes, so I will check with the Public Works Director to see where, where we're headed with that.
Thank you very much.
I had a question, too.
Yep, go ahead.
Where'd you say that opioid miscellaneous revenue was?
Let me find that actual line.
Is it separately broken out?
Other revenues. So other revenues has twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted and it shows an actual of a hundred and two thousand nineteen dollars.
Oh, I see. Okay, got it.
So we need to make a, a separate account for that.
It, it's actually gonna go into a different fund, so it, it won't even show in this report because this report is general fund.
So that makes up the majority of the over, overage?
Yeah.
Seventy-seven thousand?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should've actually looked up how much exactly the opioid settlement payments were, but it was in the neighborhood of six thousand dollars a year for five years, so thirty thousand dollars. So we're still doing well.
Yeah.
Anybody else on this? Okay. All right, so now we got the draft budget calendar. We get to cross off our tri-boards meeting. We did it, we did it.
So I was hoping that we could determine when we wanna have our budget review meetings in March. So that we could add that to the calendar. If you look on the back, I highlighted that between March seventh and March eighteenth are the dates that we would schedule those as far as in the order of process and everything. So the, the selectmen are having their meetings in February. They're actually the last four dates on the bottom of the first page or the last three dates on the bottom of the first page and the first date on the top of the second page. But in that period of time between March seventh and March eighteenth, I think it's generally been done with four meetings in prior years, typically a couple of Saturdays and a couple of evenings. So should I just suggest dates or how does, how do you usually?
So we had, let's see, so we don't even have our Board of Finance meetings in here yet. So we're meeting on February thirteenth, and then our regular meeting for March isn't until March thirteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which we sometimes just move into. What have we done last? Because we need the present, the you've got, yeah, three, six. Go back to last year.
We did March seventh last year. That's a Monday, and then two Saturdays.
And we skipped our regular meeting, right? Yeah. We didn't have like a regular meeting. So the, yeah, so March seventh last year was their presentations. We did it, right?
That was a Tuesday. I think that last year, the, oh, I'm sorry. Nope, I'm looking at the wrong year. I thought that their presentations were on like March first or see if I can find last year's calendar.
January, February, March. That's twenty-one. We don't want twenty-one. We want twenty-two. Yeah, so March seventh.
Yeah, it was.
Presentations from Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen last year.
Yeah.
Then we did the workshop on the twelfth, which was Saturday, right? Yep. Then we did the nineteenth, yeah. Then we did the twenty-first. And we did April second. And we did April twenty-sixth. Okay. So, March twenty, twenty-three. March twenty, twenty-three, there it is. So if we do the sixth again, like that, keep it on that.
So the sixth would be the Special Board of Finance budget presentation by Boards of Selectmen and Board of Education?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then the eleventh and the eighteenth would be the workshops?
Those are two Saturdays, I take it?
Those are two Saturdays, yeah. And then what else do we need in here? We had another one as well, because we usually will, we can do two. Then we did the twenty-first with during the week. Yes, we did the twelfth and nineteenth, the twenty-first.
And it looks like we also scheduled the twenty-third, but ended up canceling that.
Okay. All right, so let's do, just copy, right? So sixth for the presentations, eleventh is a workshop, the eighteenth is a workshop, and the twenty-first is a workshop. Does that work? This gives us a chance to make sure there's space available for us.
And then, did you wanna cancel the regular meeting on the thirteenth or?
Yeah.
And do we wanna ca, schedule a, a fourth date tentative that we can cancel if we're able to get through everything in three dates?
What's our?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, honey.
Why not leave the thirteenth sitting there?
Well, that's after one workshop. What's our, what, there's a drop dead date. What's our date to get it? Final week for Board of Finance budget complete and for public hearing, so three twenty-five we have to be done by. So I guess the twenty-third then?
Why not leave the thirteenth a workshop?
You wanna do Saturday, Monday? So presentation on the sixth, workshop on the eleventh, workshop on the thirteenth.
Yeah, I like that too.
Eighteenth and twenty-one?
Okay.
Keeps us closed and tight.
We're gonna go nuts.
We'll be up to speed then.
Okay. So we, so hopefully we'll be done on the twenty-first then.
So presentation March sixth, and then workshop March eleventh. What time? It's a Saturday, so what time should we do?
We do what, like nine o'clock, right?
Nine o'clock until we're done.
Nine o'clock until, usually around one o'clock, two o'clock before we start punching each other.
And then a workshop on the March thirteenth.
Yeah.
Combined with a regular meeting, there's no reason not to.
Yeah, we just kind of move every, we just add some agenda items if we have to do.
Shuffle things around a little bit.
Yeah.
So that would be at seven?
Yeah.
And then a workshop on Tuesday, March, oh, I'm sorry, Saturday, March eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be nine AM.
And then a workshop on, um,
The twenty-first, which would hopefully be the end.
Seven o'clock for that. Okay, I will update, or do we need to vote on that or is that just?
No.
Okay, all right, I'll update the calendar to follow that.
That's a lot, that's a lot. Okay.
We have, I think, started early in the past too. I don't know if anybody's available for that or not.
Right, as opposed to seven, make it six.
Six or six-thirty.
So like on the
Just throwing it out there.
On the thirteenth, you wanna do six o'clock? Yeah, let's do that. And then on the twenty-first, we can do six o'clock as well.
Okay.
I think the presentation will keep at seven. I hope people too be able to get here.
Okay. Very good. Update on the audit is, excuse me, the auditors were here two weeks ago, working on the audit for four days, I think, of that week. Unfortunately, I was out sick for three of those days, but I know that they, they've made some decent progress. They finished the, the Board of Ed EFS portion of the audit. So the, the financial controls portion of the audit is part of our audit, but there's also a, a reporting portal that they report to the State Department of Education. That audit has to be finished by December thirty. No extensions are allowed on that, so they did finish that actually, I think, three days before that. So currently, we have an extension in place until January thirty-first. I had expected likely to hear from Leslie, the, the auditor today. I did not, so I'll be reaching out to her first thing tomorrow morning to find out if anything are, are happening on that. I expect that they should be out here again this week or at, at the very latest, beginning of next week, and be able to wrap everything up by December thirty-first. If we're not able to, we can request an additional extension. But where we start bumping up against things is we file a report every year by the end of February with the bond markets, and if we end up not having a completed audit by then, we can notify them that we're gonna file that later, but it's a lot better if we file that on time. So we are definitely pushing to make the January thirty-first deadline, and if it goes any beyond that, we're definitely pushing to make early February. Oh, and the response that I had gotten from the auditors regarding the check signing was that the town can decide who they want their signatures to be. It can be whoever the town decides that the signature should be, but it should be codified in policy. So whether that's town policy or Board of Ed policy, I'm not sure. I'll get more clarification on that, but it should be spelled out in the policy.
I would think it would have to be town policy.
Yeah, I think so too.
It's not, yeah, we're not, we're not issuing any checks.
Right.
And the audit, we've done our part, right? The holdup is not on our end. For the most
I haven't met with the auditor yet.
Okay.
I met with her for a pre-meeting a month and a half or two months ago. They've come out and done work. They have some requests for some information that I need to meet with them to discuss.
Okay.
We've given them a great deal of the materials that they've asked for, but we have to work together in order to get to the finish line.
All right, so again, since it's delayed in our mind, it's just for our calendar purposes, it's delayed. Not necessarily, it's not, but for budget planning purposes, it'd be nice to have a, a num, you know, the bottom line number that we're looking at. An audited number that we're looking at, so, yeah, I wonder if we can push them along or not. I don't know, so.
Yeah, right, certainly if, if we make the January thirty-first deadline, which is very much what we're pushing for, then we'll have a bottom line front balance.
Fantastic, fantastic. Okay, um, old business. Are you all set, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fire company number two. So we have some, some things here that we need to do. So I think there's minutes in your packet from the Board of Commissioners, which explains what's going on. Oh, look, and we have guests, an audience who would like to, to join in. So Craig Mansfield and Don Angersola. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, appreciate the, the time and being able to come present this and, you know, we'll look for Bruce to put in also here and put, as he was part of the discussions prior to his term ending as a fire commissioner.
Everyone keeps noting that.
I know, it's, he is.
You on this commission.
He's very missed already. So, you know, New has done a, a ton of work looking at company to Firehouse and the issues that exist there. For those that have been around a while, we remember when we went to referendum in two thousand fifteen and we did that twenty million dollars, there was a very small amount of money that was put aside at that point to put a Band-Aid onto that building, which was done as well as to build on the additional bay, which turned into two bays, but, so those are, that money was put aside as part of that two thousand fifteen referendum. And that Band-Aid was done, there was work done to the roof, there was some stuff to shore it up a little bit, but that is a nineteen-eighties building that had a, less than a thirty-year life expectancy, and it's been pushed to its limit at this point. And it's showing its, its age by far. So we, you know, Don spent a lot of time with a, a couple of engineers to look at the site, and there's been a lot of differences of opinions on the level of safety of the building currently. And, you know, Don, can you answer those questions if you have any related to that? But where we stand today is that we know we need to go out for, you know, we need to, to create a design to basically rebuild that building from the ground up and come up with how that, that's gonna work. We went out for an RFP, we interviewed three architect firms. Silver Petraselli ended up being the firm that we are recommending. They were not the low bidder. They were about eight thousand dollars higher, ten thousand?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen higher than the, the low bidder. But there was zero comparison in the, like, when I say we couldn't even comprehend what the guy was trying to tell us that was the low bidder, just, it was such a poor presentation that we, we very quickly ruled them out. We did also interview the high bidder, who was, you know, about sixty thousand dollars over Silver Petraselli just to get their input and see if there was something fantastic that made them, you know, sixty thousand dollars more, and there clearly was not. You know, Silver has a lot of Firehouse experience and, and they, they did a really good presentation. So their bid currently comes in at about just under a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. We're budgeting and expecting, there has to be a short-term fix to that building just to keep it usable today and shore it up somehow, and, and there's a lot of discussions around how that happens. But we've also looked at, at part of Silver Petraselli's engineering study will be to help us determine what that is. Is it ties across the rafters? Is it, we have to put supports in there? What is it we have to do to make it usable in the short term and keep it safe? Right now, we have plans in place, and Irene has talked about them. If we have a significant windstorm or snow load, we know we can't keep millions of dollars worth of fire trucks in that building. They have to get moved out. So how do we make in the short term, you know, for the next six, eight months as we're building this project and getting it to shovel-ready project where we get through referendum and, and Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, town meeting, all of these things to get money to actually build it out, how do we keep it safe? So in that request for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, there is money in there to actually do that work to shore it up. We're figuring that's somewhere around thirty thousand maybe or, or less to do that, but we're budgeting that. And then we also know there's some unforeseen or reimbursed, what is called reimbursable expenses that could happen as part of the engineering and architect study. So as we start to look at environmental stuff, we may look at, how do we do any lead stuff to make the building ultimately more engineer, or more economically sound to run from an environmental point of view? We don't know, you know, the land study, we may have to survey the property if we wanna push it back. So there are things there that we'll have to look at doing. So in total, that's what falls into that hundred and seventy-five thousand. And I know Don and Rob had a discussion about there's money in a capital fund already, which was thirty-eight?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. So that leaves, you know, the, the balance of the request.
Okay. So I'm just looking at this as a practical purpose. So the actual study is the one twenty-two eight?
Yeah.
And then you are looking at an additional thirty thousand just for the quick fix to get us until the point where we're
Yeah, we're budgeting, I mean, New, you can talk better to that. It's an unknown at this point. It really is.
So I think there's been ideas back and forth on how to do it. The company actually threw a couple of ideas back. Wasn't a bidder, unfortunately. They spent a lot of time on it.
Oh.
But they didn't really get involved with it. They missed the bid date. They missed the But they didn't really get involved with it, they missed the bid date, they missed the language in the bid doc, and they never showed up. So we wound up, as Craig said, he went through three bidders, we wound up getting Silver Petroselli agreeing on it. And so I think they'll probably have a different idea from engineer to engineer, probably had different ideas and different ways to look at it. The company before had a pretty simple fix to get us by, and that was a cable tie back to the foundation. I'm hoping that if I could throw that out there at them, they may come up with the same idea, but they may not. We are going to do a little bit deeper research. Public Works is actually going to probably dig the side of the foundation up to see what the condition of that is. So I, there's probably going to be more in-depth stuff that we're going to have to do, stuff that will come into unforeseen things. And unforeseen, and we know there's going to be a fix to get us through to six, eight months until we can start construction. That was, we may not use it all. There may be money left over at the end, but it would be, they have a cushion to get these repairs done so we can continue using the building. So we don't have to move, displace Public Works, we don't have to displace anybody in the building back here.
Right.
So we can just keep it, we don't have to worry about the snow, we don't have to worry about the, about the wind until we get the building repaired or replaced.
It's about twenty thousand in, you know, reimbursable.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, and I'm just thinking out loud here. The thirty-seven thousand is already sitting in that account, kind of not, originally it said replace metal sheathing. We changed that to secure structural and engineering report, and it's still sitting there. So if we change it to, you know, what do you call it? Structural support needs or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Then just approve one twenty-two eight.
Even in the, in the name of the project now, I don't think the project name necessarily needs to be changed because it's within the same.
Right, it's for the same process and same thing. So I'm just, like, there's thirty-seven now. If we just approve the one twenty-two eight for the study and the thirty-seven is already there, then you have access to it and you can go in and then if it turns out we need more, then we can.
Yeah, the only thing would be the reimbursables, right? What's the unknown is how much can Public Works do for us? Do we have to bring in somebody with a backhoe to help do some of that? Do we have to do environmental studies based on what we find? So those, those reimbursables are the kind of unknown out there, which was what that other twenty thousand was in the number.
Okay. Okay.
And again, it may not, I mean, they may open it up and, you know, we may be a hundred percent wrong, but I don't think so. So it would be there so we could continue forward. Because I know Irene brought it up last time too, is we have applied for a grant, six hundred and twenty thousand, I believe? Or put our name in there for the state, we didn't really apply for a grant, but threw it out there for something, and the project has to be shovelled already, so.
Okay. All right, hey, Bruce, anything you want to add to that or?
No, I touched on, on everything.
Okay, Joe, any questions?
Nothing at this point, thank you.
Okay, Harvey. Harvey, anything you want to add?
I have a question, which nobody's going to hold anybody to blame for whether the answer is near, far, or wildly wrong. When they get all done specking this out, how much, how big a bullet are we going to have to bite to actually do the job? Two million, twenty million, two hundred million?
Their estimates from the last architect that was involved was anywhere between two point five and four. Okay.
We're saying three.
So.
That's about, we're, we're sitting in the middle realistically, is, I think, if you want to shoot for a realistic number.
So kind of backtrack a little bit, is the study that they gave us too, where the size of the building and location to build brand new was close to fifteen.
That's with every bell and whistle on the, on the thing though, wasn't it, like?
It could definitely have been downsized, but I mean, even still, if you take out some of the bells and whistles, you're probably still looking at ten. So, so yes, it's still a lot of money, but a lot cheaper.
No, but it's useful to know.
Correct, yep.
In the neighborhood.
Okay, Todd, any questions for them?
Well, I agree, Harvey, it's good to know it's the neighborhood. I'm a little confused. This is a renovation or a new design?
We don't know yet.
That's exactly right.
It's going to be all really up to that engineering study, Todd. Because they dig and, and it's, the footings are shot, shot, which we think they probably are. It's really a rip down for the most part.
Yeah.
So we can guarantee one pier that without, you know, we can't look through dirt, we can pretty much guarantee one pier is shot. So it's only.
Yeah. So I agree, I understand completely. Now, if we rebuild, renovate, what's the expected design life?
So.
Will we get a better building than we got before?
We are, for, the biggest reason is we're going to go around three foot with concrete. Then we'll build on top of that, so the steel will be three feet off the ground.
Good.
Right now, it's, in some places, the asphalt's touching it, and it goes to six inches.
I know.
So it'll be a twin to this building out here, it's got the three feet of block or concrete, whatever works the best. And then it'll be steel from there up. And it'll be galvanized panels, a galvanized roof, it'll be all that, we don't have none.
Okay, that's good, that's good, we're getting the money's worth.
That building owes us nothing. We're fortunate, it's lasted.
A sheet metal tent, basically.
Yeah. So.
I mean, along with that too, I mean, it's all new insulation for HVAC and everything is going to be put in there too, the stuff. It'll be, I mean, it's still going to, I mean, when they open the doors up, you're still going to lose all the heat in the winter time, but it's going to be a lot better to operate, easier to operate with the newer building too.
Yeah, I mean, currently, I don't know if you, anybody's been there in a while, but literally, the IT rack is sitting on top of the furnace and the generator, right? Because that's, there's just no space there, it was not designed to move into two thousand, forget about two thousand twenty. So that's where we are, unfortunately.
So when are you going to know that you may go to a newer building? Is that like a month from now, six months from now?
I think we have to get the money approved, and then it's going to be up to Silver Petroselli to come back and start their work. You know, there's, just like we did with this building, there's multiple, as we're doing that engineering study to firm up how we make the building safe short term, they'll be out doing user group meetings to understand what the actual use of the building is, how does it function every day? What are the true needs versus the wants? Because when we look at budget, that's all key, is how we bring this together and make sure we stay at a reasonable number. And the fire commissioners are very keen on that, I can tell you that, it's been a discussion right from the beginning on, you know, how the wish lists get monitored and what is truly, you know, makes the building function. So all that happens simultaneously, and then hopefully we can come back. It's probably a six to eight month project, Todd, to get from signing the contract to getting to where we could have design documents and be able to, to start going out to bid, is, would be my guess.
But to answer your question, I think from talking to them, they would know within pretty quick, month, month and a half, if the building was salvageable, salvageable or not.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He was pretty, he, the engineer that day was pretty confident that he could have that.
That's what I was looking for. He'd come back to us at appropriate time, maybe then, and tell us, give us an idea how you're doing progress report, so to speak.
Yes.
And then we can think about funding and the big number.
Yes, and yeah, but Craig's a hundred percent right there. Look, we're probably six months probably before it's probably ready for anything, but he was pretty confident, month, month and a half, he would have an answer.
Good.
Or down or fix it.
And the other issue you have is supply chain issue. You know, even for a building like that, if you try to go to like a Morton Building or something like that, which may be, I don't know if cheaper is the right word, but it may be quicker to bring in and sit it there, you're three years out to get them to deliver today. So it's going to be, that's going to drive the end project a lot, and when we need the funding based on some of that.
So we, just to, I mean, he brought that up, I forgot about it. Actually, I did actually talk to Morton Buildings, and they came down and they looked, and they were seven hundred grand just for a shell. No foundation, there was nothing there. So, you know, we're, it's.
Well, steel, as you know, it's become enormously expensive.
I saw, I'm, you know, getting the numbers from these guys, I, I think they're pretty close.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question. I'm not sure how to refer to this paper here. Oh, but it's RFP for Architectural and Engineering Services. My question is, why did Mr. Deal vote nay? Does anyone know the reasoning for that?
So I do.
Is it okay if I?
Yeah, sure. So Silver Petroselli was the architect for this building and the engineer for this, they did the architectural engineering and all of that for this building. Eric sat on the committee, I chaired that committee, that building committee. Eric, there were things that Silver Petroselli did as we ultimately designed out that building that we didn't like. And Eric had a much stronger opinion related to that than other committee members. So.
Could you, so what was it that they did that he wasn't in favor?
There's a couple of things we have to remember. We asked Silver Petroselli to come in and design us a building for fifteen million dollars, right? We had a very hard price tag on building out this building. So there were things that, I don't blame all of the, some of the issues that we had in this building on Silver Petroselli. We, we, as the committee, made choices to value engineer our things out, and some of that was around the mechanicals of the building. So we've had a lot of issues with the HVAC in this building and some, I shouldn't say a lot, we've had issues here, ongoing issues with the HVAC. And some of that was to blame on Silver Petroselli, some of that was to blame on the companies that put it in. And some of it probably to blame on the folks that ultimately have serviced it over time just because there's been so many fingers in it trying to fix things. So Eric had a much stronger opinion on that, related to that, than other committee members did on Silver Petroselli and their work. Now, were there things in this building that Silver Petroselli took responsibility for? Sure, there were outlets that weren't wired to the generator and some of that, things around air conditioning and the emergency management wing not being on the generator, absolutely, was screws up, screw up on their part in the design, and they've taken responsibility and said they screwed it up, and we fixed it over time or, you know, in the process. But I think when you look at this building, the strong, Silver Petroselli's strong suit is coming in, creating a design that works for you as, as an end user, and working with the end user to get that design created. And that's really what we need in this design that we're doing. This is not a big mechanical project, it's building a shell and putting in some HVAC and some electricity and a little water. So, you know, my, personally, my reservations, and Eric and I talked about this for an hour, right? And went back and forth. But I think the reservations that are there, Eric has some legitimate points on it, but that's why.
Anything else?
Yeah, just trying to figure out how to articulate this, no. I guess that's a, that's a good thing and a bad thing. So my, I work on projects in my full-time job, and then we have something called lessons learned. So I guess that's, if we're going to go forward with them, that's a good thing to be aware of because we could focus on those areas as the project progresses.
Correct. And, and David Stein, who's the principal architect, he and I have had many conversations about the lessons learned from this building and, and things that went wrong. And, and as the committee chair, I'll take responsibility for some of it. You know, there were four thousand pages of documents related to the build of this building on top of the plans. We, as a committee, went through all four thousand pages of that and the plans, and we missed it too, right? It was the way it was designed. Now, not that it was fully our job and they designed it, but we did make other changes and catch other things. So, you know, many of us on the committee have construction background and building buildings. That's what we do as part of our full-time lives, and we missed it. So it is, it definitely was a lesson learned on certain things, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, and like I said, Eric and I have had some very detailed calls about it.
It's, I mean, it's a legitimate question.
It is, absolutely.
It also says something that they came back and, and bid on another building in this town. So they don't think that, you know, we're nuts and we ask for the moon and we're, they know what, they know what East Hattam is about when it comes to spending money.
Absolutely, and they're a great partner in getting things through referendum. They did a fantastic job in selling this project to the public in how they help present it and pull the package together, so that, they're very strong at that. And if you look at their portfolio, they do a lot of municipality work, which I think is very helpful as you try and build this out.
And they were a legitimate bidder for the HVAC for the high school, they were just higher.
Yeah.
Right.
There was, I mean, they were legitimate, they came in, they did a great presentation, they have the whole background of it, but they were just a high bid.
Okay.
But we did talk to them, they did a good job.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they, they always show up for East Hattam, so. Okay, so I get the one seventy-five number, and we have thirty-seven of it. Question is, where are we going to, where's it going to come from? So Rob and I have had some discussions about ARPA and how we're going to use that money. And was this on the original list?
I can give some background for the numbers.
You know better than I do.
So the, the ARPA award that we received was two million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So far, the only portion of that that has been officially used, meaning anything that's actually been voted on or brought to town meeting or anything like that, was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars that was part of the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget. There have been discussions about other capital items, culvert design, purchase of a sweeper, funding part of the broadband study, radio towers, numerous other things that we've discussed, but there hasn't been any final official determination on any of those things. But even after taking into account all of those items that we've discussed, we have roughly nine hundred thousand dollars that we haven't earmarked for anything in particular. So keeping in mind that these ARPA funds have to be expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the time eventually runs out. So, you know, we, I guess we need to think about how do we want to use ARPA funds? How can we use ARPA funds to help the future financial health of the, of the town? Obviously, paying operational expenses with ARPA funds, once the funds run out, goes to taxes to cover all those expenses that we had been covering with grants. But if we were using ARPA funds to, to purchase capital items or to reduce our future debt service, so we can't use ARPA funds to pay down debt service or to, you know, put into a savings account for future debt service, but what we can do is instead spend ARPA funds on projects now that we would otherwise bond later. But we have to do the projects now. So all of this kind of, in my opinion, boils down to it makes sense to fund the balance of that hundred and seventy-five thousand, which comes to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand out of the ARPA funds, and then consider how we want to spend, you know, the remainder of the ARPA funds at a later date.
Does that make sense for everybody?
Yes.
So Rob had a conversation, I couldn't be on it, with Phil Lindsay, the, our debt guy.
Our financial advisor.
Municipal advance advisor, about the ARPA funds and the limitations. And Phil agrees that our thought was that we would cede the capital savings account, and he's, it seems to be a little sketchy to do that because it's kind of, you can't, it has to be tied to a specific project. So us doing that doesn't look like we're, we're going to be able to do that. So we're going to have to spend the mon- So us doing that doesn't look like we're, we're gonna be able to do that, so we're gonna have to spend them on actual, specific things. So this is one of them. Okay. Any, are we good? Any questions on doing that? Okay, so we can do the motion as, as presented here. So I need a motion to allocate, uh, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from the Town ARPA Fund Grant Fund.
Fifteen zero, one five zero zero, sorry.
Uh, one five zero zero.
Account five nine zero two zero.
Five nine zero two zero to the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget under Project C, zero two one seven, to fund the cost of a contract for architectural services in accordance with RFP bid, number two zero two two dash one, renovation of Firehouse Company Two, and to request that the Board of Selectmen schedule a town meeting for approval. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Galston.
Thank you, in a second.
Second, Watley.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, boys.
Thank you. Have a good night, happy new year to everybody.
Play in your sandbox.
Yes, have fun.
Thank you very much. All right, on to new business. New business. We have a grant acceptance for the Historic Document Preservation Grant. Motion, I need a motion to accept a grant in the amount of five thousand, five hundred dollars from the State of Connecticut Library for the Purpose of Historic Document Preservation, account two six zero four one dash four three zero zero zero. And to recommend that the Board of Selectmen schedule a town meeting for approval.
So moved. Go ahead, Bruce.
Now they're jumping over on this side.
Go for it, Bruce.
So moved, Dutch.
Dutch, and who's gonna second it?
Thomas second.
Thank you, Thomas is seconding it. Any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have, here we go, Neglected Cemetery Account Grant. Do you, do you have any information?
This is a grant that, um, this is a grant that, um, we have applied for and, uh, been awarded, uh, several times in the past. I don't believe that it's been an every-year thing, but, um, it's something that we have been awarded several times. It doesn't require a match, but we already budget general funds for, um, cemetery upkeep. And, uh, it's the feeling, um, of, of the people that are putting together the application that will probably, uh, have better chance of being awarded the grant if we offer the match. So that match doesn't cost us anything, because it's something that we already budgeted and planned to, to spend. So this is just a request to, to be able to, uh, submit the application.
Where's it from? Is it state? Is it a?
It's, it is state, yeah. Oh, yeah, I didn't include that on the, uh, thanks.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious.
It doesn't really say.
It doesn't really say.
Well, I, I do have more documentation on it if you want me to take a second to look it up.
That's okay.
It's, it's definitely government, it's not private.
I'm just curious. Okay, I need a motion to authorize the application for the twenty-twenty-three Neglected Cemetery Preservation Grant in an amount up to five thousand dollars, with a currently budgeted, budgeted general fund match of up to five thousand dollars for the restoration and improvement of neglected burial grounds and cemeteries in East Haddam. Need a motion?
So moved, Galston.
No, not everybody jump at once. Seconded? Joe?
Second, Corbett.
Thank you.
You gotta have a speaking part.
They're balanced still.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next we have our portion of the town budget, which, um, this is the operational, uh, part of Board of Finance and includes the contingency fund, which is the, uh, portion of the operating budget. If there's a, somebody who needs a little extra money, that's what, that's where it comes from first, before it goes, comes from something else. So we've got, um, Recording Secretary, we've got, um, last year we did the transfer to the town clerk, we traded, so, um, now we have our own Recording Secretary, so we're not doing that anymore. The Purchase Professional Services, I don't know what that was, don't have to remember anymore.
That has to do with audit fees.
Oh, right, okay.
And you see an increase in audit fees, because every other year we have our, um, OPEB and, um, pension actuary, a, a full valuation. So this year it's just a, a partial valuation. Basically, they just roll forward the numbers and apply inflation, so next year it'll be a little bit more expensive.
Okay, then we have postage, which has gone up, as we know. Advertising, um, we've just come down, I, I think that's mostly for the newspaper stuff.
It is, yeah, yeah, and we just, we historically haven't spent as much as the budget over the last few years.
And same with the printing and binding. Office supplies, which I think is just a function of how much things cost. And then the contingency fund, bonds, something disclosure, which is the same. And then we have the placeholder for human resources, so that's gonna go back where it belongs in wherever it's gonna go. And it won't be in our budget, so, um.
The, the only reason why I put that line in here is because, as of yet, in the current year, we have not moved, um, the funds from contingency to shared services. I, I would assume that if that human resources position continues next year, it would most likely be in shared services. I, I just didn't wanna be the one to make the determination that that's coming out.
Well, I mean, technically it isn't, that's our line, so.
Right.
I think for this budget year, it's gonna be out of that line. And then wherever it ends up in the town budget for the one we're working on now.
If anywhere.
What?
If anywhere.
Right? Not my budget, I don't know. Any questions on this?
I do. Didn't, didn't your audit fees go up a little bit too? I know you mentioned OPEB, but I, I, I think I remember someone saying that, audit fees went up.
So I don't have the price yet for fiscal year, for the audit that'll be done next year, because the contract, while it's a, it's a three-year contract, it has an option for two additional years extension, but I haven't gotten a price on that yet. So based on what, um, prior years were, I just put in an eight percent increase.
Yeah. So Ian the OPEB, but a combination of those.
Correct.
Drives the four thousand increase, okay.
I also have a question on the human resources position. Please refresh my memory, where does the forty point eight percent come from?
Um, so in the current year, there's an existing budget in the Board of Finance budget for contingency of seventy-nine, nine fifty. In the current year, the actual cost that, um, that that position is probably going to incur, including, uh, payroll taxes, is closer to thirty-four, thirty-three thousand, because it's, uh, less hours, I think, than what had initially been, uh, thought. And also that person was, uh, not employed here for the, the full year. So right now, that cost is being booked to shared services, but there are other vacancies that occurred in shared services during the year, so. I think what the intent probably was, was that the Board of Finance would move that, those contingency fund, budgeted funds into shared services, 'cause that's generally how contingency works. Is you take it out of the Board of Finance budget and you add it to another department's budget.
To clarify, it's placeholder. So there's, the contingency fund is ours.
Yes.
The placeholder was for this particular position. So that is what you're talking about, not the actual contingency fund.
Right, okay.
So, right, so it is its separate line. Right, it's got a, yeah, it's got its own, uh, number.
So, so I, I'm not sure I'm following the question.
So the contingency fund is for the, the, um, it actually is a, a policy, a percentage of the budget. And it's just for any emergency or anybody that has anything, you know, any department that comes up that's in need. Like open space probably should have come to us and said, we need another thirty-two hundred dollars, instead of running over their budget. So, something like that. And then we would say, yes, here you go, you can have it. And it's gonna come from the contingency fund, because it wasn't budgeted. This human resources position is, what happened was, it's, you know, it's been a back and forth for the last, I don't even know, at least three years, in the Board of Finance discussion every year. So what happened was, we pulled it out of shared services and said, we're gonna hold it in the Board of Finance budget, operating budget, until you people figure it out. And then we were gonna put it where it belongs. So while it's here right now, when the town budget gets finished, that's gonna come out and go where it's supposed to go. Like, we're gonna, you know, we can approve it here, it's not, it doesn't really matter, because it'll change once the tent, once the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen does their budget.
But the way you have it displayed here as contingency and then human resources as two separate lines, is just the way I think we intended to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
It's correct. So when you say out of contingency, it's really not, it's out of the placeholder. I'm gonna say it that way, yeah.
But the first selectman has spent human resources dollars so far this year, right?
Yeah, and it's coming out of that, yeah.
And that's where the actual numbers come from.
Yes, yes, yes.
That was what I was getting at, I thought so.
Yeah, they're paying a person and it's coming out of that account, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hope we can get rid of this problem.
So wanna be done with this thing.
They don't like holding somebody else's money.
Oh my god, just figure it out.
I'd love hanging on to other people's money.
Well, um, okay, so can I get a motion to approve the Board of Finance Budget, Board of Finance Budget Request in the amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-six? A hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So moved, Dutch.
Thank you, Mr. Dutch. Can I get a second?
Second, Harvey.
Mr. Thomas, thank you so much. Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Guest and audience comments? I need a name and if you could either stand up and talk really loud, because.
Okay, I can, I can stand up and I can talk about it.
Okay.
Um, I guess I have two conceptual questions. One is, has the Board of Finance determined kind of a philosophy of what they're gonna set for the, the budget process this year? Um, I guess what I'm thinking in my mind is with inflation and everything going up, if the mindset is, we're just gonna pass on the increases to the public, it would be nice to know in advance. Or is there a mindset to try to work in the middle somewhere?
We haven't had that discussion, but I will put it on the agenda for February, 'cause we still have a little time before they come to us, so, yeah.
Okay, and the, the second question I have is, the reevaluation and maybe Todd's, uh, article will
The article.
address that, but I know where I live, there were six houses sold in the complex in the last year. Four of the houses were sold in the first half of the year, and they sold at above market or above asking price.
Really?
Two units sold in October and November at about fifteen to twenty percent less. So, what, and when I talked to the evaluators about it, they said, well, we just used last year's sales and we can only go back to October, we can only use a one-year period. And my point is, you, the evaluation is skewed on the high side because of people overpaying. And that the, uh, period of evaluation ought to be, uh, greater than one year, ought to be two or three years. So you, you even things out and it doesn't yet, uh, influenced undoubtedly. And I think, I, I personally believe that the high reavowals in the town are partially influenced by the demand and the over, uh, overselling of units or, right, uh, houses. 'Cause I know, I know there were units that got more money than their asking price. And houses have too.
Oh, that happened, yeah.
And, and I know my brother sold his house in Salem and he got ten thousand dollars more than what he was asking. He got, he sold it in one day.
It's a, it's a good point, I, um, I don't, I don't know.
Is the methodology for the revale- assessed values prescribed by state statute?
Yeah, I think so.
So we don't have any flexibility. You, you may be right, that it's not the best way to do it, but. No, we're not gonna go to jail for not doing it that way.
Yeah, no, I, I guess then maybe what I'm suggesting is that the tax
Assessor.
Assessor is gonna get a lot of requests for review.
Yes.
See, right, then you're, then it's a Board of Assessment Appeals issue, but, yeah, I'm not even sure. Do you guys know that from your, um, research so far?
What exactly are you asking us?
Is it, is the process for the revaluation, um,
Sequenced.
Well, no, is it, is it told out in the statutes as to how you do it, like the?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and the last step is a Board of Assessment Appeals.
Right.
That's the last step.
There's three different ways of doing it and one of them is comparing the sales prices in your neighborhood. And then there's two others and I have to look back at it again.
Okay.
But there's three different ways you can do it.
So it's prescribed in law and then that's how they do it, okay, so, all right.
Yeah, no, I knew it was, it's in the statute.
Okay.
They didn't have any discretion, but all I'm saying is, what happened in practice was they had overevaluated and now I think the zoning, the, the tax
Assessment Appeals, yeah.
Order of Assessment Appeals is gonna get a lot of requests to be reviewed.
I mean, I, I think we all knew they were gonna go up because of the crazy thing that happened the last two years. I think the precipitous drop that it took in the last four months was very unexpected, as far as, you know, everything's tanking.
I, is, I don't think it's coming back anytime soon.
Anytime soon, I know, it's gonna take a while.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna suggest it might be helpful to you to listen to our meeting tomorrow, our communications meeting. And the last one that we had, we're going into more detail on this and the article when it eventually comes out. It'll help clarify that and alleviate some of these concerns that you may have, but I don't wanna say too much. So.
Okay, yeah, well, plus it's, I mean, it kind of is our thing, but it's not really, it's the, the Board of, I mean, the town assessor, tax assessor, so it doesn't even come out of this, oh, it's a, it's over there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just decided.
We hear it, we hear it, but we, we don't have anything to do with it. Anything else?
Yep.
All set, sir?
No, it's just very interesting.
Thank you. Well, we're so excited, everybody would.
We go into this great detail, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone, anyone looking on?
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, well, I, I checked my email and nobody has, but also unfortunately the live feed, uh, dropped out about twenty minutes ago. We've been trying to work with the technical challenges.
Okay, uh, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we're done.
That was my timing.
Perfect.
Bruce, I have one question for you.
He jumps on that one. So we're out, we're done, that's weird.
Motioning to adjourn.
Rob? We're not on the air.
I'm gonna shut off.
Yeah, I heard that too.
The next question is, how much money is involved? The ministers get triple finger salaries and teachers get small salaries.
I know, I know.
Was that from, um? Irene, is that what you said?
No, the, your meeting.
Oh, the meeting, yeah, the meeting.
Tomorrow night, six-thirty, meeting room four.
Yeah.
Right here, six-thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to come.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Was that from Hillstone College?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I still have that off to the side to read.
If you read the whole article.
I, I looked at it.
I'm gonna find out if I can just shut it off.
I'm gonna find out if I can just shut it off for.
And I was like, wait a minute, it's in my mail. But, yeah, I saw, I pulled it out to read, and I haven't read it. Oh, I know, yeah.
I mean, Craig is right, the building wasn't meant to last forever.
Wow.
But when it was built, it wasn't built right.
Oh, well, that, I'm just, I'm just curious.
If I understand it correctly, then you, you would know way better than.
I have no idea.
If I understand it, that, that the very target tips toward the building, I mean, your grandpa would have told you, make it go.
And when they, and when they sand the parking lot, you know, you're swinging the salt and everything up against the steel.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, look what it does to the cars nowadays.
And then it, it sits and it puddles, and then it hits onto the, the bolts that hold the building down.
Caustic chemicals on there twenty-four seven.
It's okay, it's bad.
But I know, I don't think it's gonna. It doesn't replace your brain.
It's gonna fall down. Right, right, right.
And they're teaching it the wrong way, I use computers every day.
But they're gonna worry about snow load.
Absolutely.
Anyway, that, the time to worry about that was in August.
You've gotta watch it.
I know.
Please, please watch it.
It's very late now.
It's a documentary.
Was this, was this?
Look at this, that's nice.
Every Board of Finance member should watch that.
Okay, there, yeah.
Because the Board of Finance members got, it's broken up.
Yeah.